Hello everyone and welcome to the Get Growing Weekly Work Session Independence Day Special. It is the 4th of July here in the United States. This is our national holiday and we are celebrating freedom. We are celebrating the freedom to have our own business, right? To be able to go out and do the things that we love with the people that we love. And what better business to create freedom than the one you are in right now? So today, we are going to talk about creating freedom with your Young Living business. Specifically, four steps to creating real freedom with residual income in your Young Living business. Let's get started. Alright, so again, first I want to welcome you guys. If you are brand new, if you have never seen this before. By the way, if you're watching this live, you're seeing this as a premiere on YouTube or perhaps as a recording after the fact. We usually do this session live, but today it is a recording because of the holiday. We wanted to make sure that we are able to serve our members and our community all over the world however. So we got a training for you here today. Alright, so again, welcome. If you're not familiar with us, we provide an amazing platform for Young Living distributors who want to grow their business. If you want to sustain and grow and scale, we have everything you need all under one roof, all for one insanely reasonable price where you can actually go and get started for a dollar. And I'll tell you more about that here in just a little bit. Today though, we're going to talk about training and specifically training on how you can create real freedom in your business. And this is something that's going to apply to you whether you are a Get Oil and Community member or not. So long as you are someone who wants to grow your business with Young Living, we are here to serve you with this training today. Alright, so who here, maybe a quick show of hands, let us know in the comments, who here wants to build real residual income, right? The kind of income that comes in whether you're on the beach or in the bed or sleeping, you know, coming in overnight, whatever, however that works. You get paid on what you did a long time ago. Who here wants that? Everyone, right? Who wouldn't want that? Now, there are four things that you need to focus on if you want to create it and keep it. Alright, so we're going to learn each one of these four things today and not just theory, right? I'm not just going to teach to you and tell you that, you know, well, you need to do these four things, but then go figure them out. Good luck. I'm actually going to break down how you get these things done today on this training. So we're going to talk about how to implement each one of those, most importantly. So this doesn't just mean you're going to learn what they are, you're going to learn how to get them done. Alright, so who's ready to get started? So excited to teach this. Alright, so here are the four pillars of a freedom business. Number one, branding and leads, okay? We're going to get into what exactly this means. If that sounds foreign to you, take a deep breath, we're going to get there. The second pillar of your freedom business is doing the right kind of work. Third pillar, duplication. I'm sure you've heard of this one. It is critical to creating a business that provides and continually delivers and expands over time with residual income. Duplications, we're going to talk about this. And then we're going to talk about retention because this is obviously important as well. If you want to create residual income, you need to retain. So we're going to go into all four of these things in greater detail here. So let's go ahead and get started. But first, let's talk about this one fact. And I think that this is, you know, if you really think about it, we operate out of touch with this fact. You need people. It means you need to talk to people. It means you need to invite people, right? It means you need to present to people. It means you need to follow up with people. You need people, right? You don't need information. You don't need product. But that's an interesting point to make, right? Like that might make you scratch your head a little bit. The fact is, is that you need people for this business. The company provides everything else, right? There is sufficient information out there available right now for everything else. All you need to do is connect people to this and keep people connected to this, right? That's like pairing this down to something super, super simple. The fact is that you need people. You need more people to talk to and you need to keep those people in touch with the company so that you keep that residual income. So at the core of all of this guys is that you need people. Now, let's talk about how we get people in any number of ways with branding and lead generation. So if you're not familiar with branding or you want to refresh your, very simply branding, so is your personal brand, you as a brand. Branding is showing up consistently with relevance where your target market hangs out. Alright, showing up consistently in a relevant way in front of the people that you want to know about you. That's branding, no matter if you're an individual or if you're Apple or Coca-Cola. Alright, showing up consistently, relevantly where your target market hangs out. Alright, lead generation is interested people self-selecting in order to hear more from you about what you have to offer that can help them, right? So this is something that would happen when you maybe saw an article that was relevant to you and somebody offered a guide or some kind of downloadable or a workbook or something that helped you to solve a problem or to get a thing done. When you got that thing, you probably shared your information and now you're a lead for whoever that that person or entity was, right? So lead generation means getting leads, getting people to talk to who are interested in hearing what you have to say. Alright, so now we've got those two things covered, let's break this down a little further. What is branding after all? Let's talk about how you figure this out for yourself. This is the getting it done part, you guys. So first, you have to ask yourself, who do you help? How do you help them? What can you give that person that you want to help that can help them right now, right? And I'm not talking about an oil or a supplement, right? I'm not talking about a Young Living product yet. What can you give them that can help them right now that might lead to a conversation with you about Young Living? Think about that. And let's talk about how to implement and do these things consistently. So first, you can blog, right? You can regularly share information that is relevant to and helps your target market, right? Not necessarily putting something out there that's just promotional because people who aren't already members of Young Living don't care what Young Living's promotions are, right? We're out there to create opportunities for people to say, I want to be a part of this community. I want to know more about how I can change my life. We don't do that by promoting to them, right? We don't do that by throwing things at them. What we do is we invite them. We create a breadcrumb trail where they can follow information that's relevant to them, remember? And that leads to them being open to joining this community, right? Alright, blogging is a great way to do this. Video using YouTube and things like that, that's great as well. Social media can be good for this, but there's a huge caveat here. It only works if it is content-based and lead generation friendly. Now, what that means is if it's content-based, this means that you're creating that helpful stuff that people want to follow, the breadcrumbs, right? Not promotion, but the helpful bits. If it's content-based, if you're sharing helpful things that could then lead to conversations where someone could be exposed to Young Living, that's a solid move on social media. And of course, if it's lead generation friendly, meaning you're offering that thing of value that someone would be able to self-select themselves for, to be able to hear more from you. Alright, so let's give an example just to kind of bring this down even further into reality for you so this makes sense. So first, I help and this is who do you help, right? So we're going back to the list that we just went over just to recap here. Who do you help? How do you help them? What can you give them right now that might lead to a conversation that helps them right away? How do you implement this? Alright, so I help homeschool moms save time, money, and headaches with real advice, guidance, and recipes that support happy holistic families. I do this by blogging and sharing videos that instruct with DIYs and recipes and informs busy moms removing the guesswork from the difficult process of choosing the right products for our family's overall wellbeing and daily life. I have a free guide that breaks down the top 10 credit culprits so busy moms can easily make sense of confusing product labels. People can get the guide by filling out their name and email on a landing page. And I talk about this guide on my blog posts and videos that I post two times per week and share on social media. Does this all kind of starting to make sense to you? Alright, so when moms start, when moms opt-in to get my top 10 credit culprits guide, their name and email goes into my Get Oil and Contact Manager. These are my leads. And the more I show up and share relevant information like those blog posts and videos with the right people, the more leads I get. Make sense? Alright, so let's talk about how you pull this off. First, you create that guide. So my top 10 credit culprits guide, you can create that on a Get Oil and Custom page. So it is a webpage on your Get Oil and website that is not visible. You can choose those settings. We have trainings that show you exactly how to do this. If you don't feel tech confident, don't worry. We will hold your hand and walk you through this process should you want to create something like this. So you create that guide on a custom page. You also have the option of creating that guide with some other kind of shareable media such as a PDF or an image or a video or something to that effect. The sky is the limit here, alright? You can then create a campaign. Now, all this is is a series of messages that are delivered automatically once someone opts in to receive what is your lead magnet, right? So that guide is called a lead magnet, meaning it's the thing that pulls your leads in. So you create a campaign that thanks those leads for opting in and then sets expectations for what they'll learn from you as they keep in touch, as you're emailing regularly, sending out this helpful information with the occasional promotion, right? That campaign should absolutely also ask them to reach out to you and talk to you about their healthy goals too, so you can strike up that conversation and share Young Living with them one-on-one. Of course, you would be linking that campaign that you created to a landing page. Landing page being the place where people would enter their name and email address so that they could get that guide and then of course start receiving these emails or text messages from you depending on how you've set this up. Again, we got trainings on this, you can follow them step by step. And then you of course will take that landing page that sells this lead magnet that you have, this guide where people can put their information in so they're able to receive it. You share that landing page link on your blog posts and videos. So you've got this guide that is, you know, here are the 10 credit culprits on the drugstore shelves. And maybe you write a blog post about your favorite DIY skincare recipe for soothing sunburns, right? Where it's the 4th of July right now as you're seeing this. And then at the end of that blog post, after you've shared that recipe, you can say, oh hey, and by the way, if you want help figuring out the things to avoid when you go to the store to purchase products for yourself and your family, you're going to want to get this guide. Put your, you know, click here and fill out the information and you will get my top 10 credit culprits guide that will save you all kinds of time and headache at the drugstore, right? See, then you share that on your blog posts and videos. So now you know how to get leads, right? I've just explained to you exactly. Soup to nuts, that is how you start getting leads for yourself. Now let's talk about the second pillar. We're talking about the right kind of work, right? Because once you get those leads, whether they're leads that are just people that you know that they aren't self-selecting, you're just prospecting them and inviting them to review information, whether you're doing that, which is an important activity, or whether you are working with leads who are self-selecting online and reaching out to them individually, it's important that you remember that you're doing the right kind of work to grow your business because there is a right kind and a wrong kind of work if you want to build a residual freedom business with Young Living. So have you ever heard of an IPA? You might have, you probably have, I hope you have. If not, welcome to the world of growing your business like a boss. IPA is not just a great beer, it is an income-producing activity. These are the things that you need to do the most of in your business if you want it to grow and especially if you want it to duplicate and retain so that you can work smarter, not harder, and make more money for the time that you are working, right? You don't want a time for money exchange, you want residual income. Alright, so before, before I go too far down this rabbit hole, without further ado, let's get to these first. And there's only five of these guys. There are only five income-producing activities in your business. Crazy? Yeah, it's really not. They're very simple. So first, inviting someone to review information, right? So this is either someone that you already know or a lead who has opted in to receive your, you know, 10 credit culprits guide. You're reaching out and saying, hey, I am giving a presentation. I would like to invite you to check out something that I'm working on. I have something that I believe will help you with a problem that you shared with me. Would you be available to sit down with me or to attend this class or to come to this online meeting or this Facebook Live at this date and time? That's an invitation. That is one of the most profitable activities you can undertake in your business. So that's one, inviting. Number two, exposing. So this is delivering the presentation. This is sitting down one-on-one and showing and sharing Young Living. This is giving a larger presentation in a group setting, however it may be. It is also, if you're doing it effectively, and we do have other trainings on that that we've done recently, if you go to youtube.com/getoil. You will see our videos on how to grow your business. Some of the more recent ones that were just before this one on the Weekly Work Session playlist go into the right ways you can expose long distance. If you're doing this right, you are also doing your activities in a profitable, productive way. Alright, now the next one, these are pretty simple so far, right? Inviting to show information, showing information. And now we are following up on information. This is if someone has just reviewed information or they saw it yesterday or what have you. Making sure that someone who has seen the information that you have shared in fact has seen it and understands what they saw. And then closing, getting a yes or a no from that person who you have followed up with or who you have just exposed. Obviously, this is where the actual money happens, right? That initial starter kit, right? Getting people onto ER, getting that first purchase, close, get a yes or a no, right? Super important, obviously. And then finally, repeating this process and only repeating this process as often as possible. And then of course, duplicating this process with your teammates. Making sure that those who want to share Young Living as a business are focusing on these income-producing activities because duplication, successful duplication rather, because you can duplicate bad things too, right? Successful duplication depends entirely on the duplication of these activities. Alright, now, these are literally, literally the only and most valuable ways to spend your time on your business, period, right? Yes, 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 yes. Following up with your existing customers is valuable. Yes, having a care call is valuable, absolutely. Yes, letting your existing members know about current promos and specials, yes, that is valuable. But not half as valuable as those income-producing activities because those are what duplicate, right? Having pretty graphics, right? Having a well-planned event, these are all nice things, but they are not half as important as the income-producing activities, okay? You want to make sure that you are spending at least 60% of your time on those five income-producing activities. Not on training, not on education, not on anything other than those IPAs. 60 plus percent of your time needs to be spent on those things. And the focus on duplicating those with people who are in your organization who want to share, right? Spend 20% of your time, maybe a little more, depending on how the balance of things work. Spend that on your lead generation activity, right? So creating those resources so that you can go out and blog and you can get more of those leads online. This is how you move out of that, you know, I feel like I've talked to everyone I know situation and you start attracting people who are out there, who are looking for information that you have to share, who would love to then learn from you about Young Living and join you and share and so on and duplicate the process, right? So with that 60% in mind, part of that remainder you spend on your lead gen activity, right? So creating those opportunities for people to come to you and say, hey, tell me more about what you're doing, right? And then less than 20%, so 20% or less, you spend on maintenance. So this is your care calls, this is the following up with your team, this is the accountability with people in your organization. This is probably what you, if you're here right now and you have a team, this is probably what you currently spend 60 plus percent of time, right? We need to flip that. I mean, you need to spend 20% or less of your time on those things. Do you want to know why? And we'll get to this a little later. I'm getting ahead of myself, but I'll let you know the secret right now. Maintenance work doesn't duplicate. If we put a focus on maintenance work, we're just going to have a whole lot of people spinning their wheels in our organization. And if we're spinning our wheels and stuck in the mud, does our team grow? Of course not. Alright, so 60% of your time, period, on inviting, exposing, following up, closing, repeating, and duplicating. That's it. Alright, let's talk about how you pull this off. What are the ways, the actions, the steps that you take? What do you use? What do you do to implement this, right? First, use your Get Oil and Digital Upline Coach to track your activity. Because the thing is, is that you might feel like you are really busy, right? You might feel like you have just been so covered up in all the work that you've got to do for your business, only to discover that you have spent 10% of your time on income-producing activities. Can't stress enough, you guys, it's really important. You can't measure what you can't track and you can't grow what wasn't measured and tracked, right? You won't know that you've grown. You won't know that you are moving in a positive direction if you aren't tracking. And you can get your Digital Upline Coach who will show you exactly the kind of work you need to do every single day for a dollar for your first month with Get Oil and. You can also connect your Digital Upline Coach to others and to your team. We'll talk about that here shortly. But this is just a really, really powerful and unique feature. You will not find this anywhere else, not in, not in the Young Living space and you won't find this even in the general network marketing space either. This is a unique feature that was built exclusively for you guys. Put this to you, I promise you, it will show you. And even more importantly, duplicate that education onto your teammates, alright? And then track your time. I love using an egg timer for this, for timing tasks, you know, so the little, you know, the timer you would use in your kitchen, you know, so say I'm only going to spend 30 minutes on Facebook or I'm only going to spend 30 minutes today on creating some of my digital assets to lead, to generate leads, right? Track your time so you actually know how you're spending it. Really, really important for you to do. And then use follow-up plans to stay on track. Now, we have trainings on these inside the Get Oil and System and also on our Weekly Work Session playlist here on YouTube where I believe there's actually one, if you look for it. It's something about time management. I'm pretty sure the title, the time management is in the title. We talk about how you can actually set up follow-up plans where you do the same thing with each lead or you do the same thing with each new teammate. And when you apply that to your contact and your contact manager, you all, you already have everything in place so that you know, you can check off the boxes for every action that you're supposed to take. So having a phone call, following up with information, whatever the steps are that you take, whether it's for an event or whether it's for a one-on-one, you can design these systems so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel with every new prospect and every new teammate. And so you can stay on track and show even more people and be able to manage that volume of new prospects without having to trade all of your time away in the process. Those follow-up plans are the best-kept secret of this platform. And then really importantly, you guys, keep it simple. If you want to create one of those lead generation resources like I talked about in our first pillar, just do one thing at a time. Focus on one thing at a time. Don't let the tech side or the optimization side of building your business swallow your time because remember, you got to keep that 60% plus of those income-producing activities that we've covered. Now, speaking of keeping it simple, let's talk about duplication. Now, this is our third pillar of our four pillars of a freedom business. Now, I want you to first ask yourself, let's just take a deep collective breath and be brutally honest. Is your approach to building your business right now duplicable? Here's how you make it so. First, when you are sharing any information at all, it doesn't matter if it's in a Facebook post or in a lead magnet, a guide, like we were talking about in pillar one, or if you are presenting information at a class or wherever it might be. What you don't want is a so what? You want a me too, right? Everything that you do needs to feel inclusive, approachable, and simple enough for somebody else to say, oh, I could do that too, right? You don't want a barrier to duplication. You want to be your approachable self. You don't need to put on airs. You don't need to perfect anything. You need to be you because being you is duplicable, right? If we could all celebrate our strengths in our individuality and look at how we can perform the same simple tasks over and over again and show others to do the same, we can have a rapidly duplicating organization, correct? Right? So be you and make sure everything that you do is a, oh yeah, I can do that too, right? Gurus don't duplicate. Brainiacs don't duplicate. Perfect doesn't duplicate. Quick aside story, one of the most important things that I ever learned about holding live events for groups of people to give presentations is that you don't want to have the most perfect setup because nobody is going to want to go have a party like that one to share information or to have an event like that to share information. It's going to seem too, like too much work or it's going to seem too complicated or too out of reach. One of the things that I learned was, don't cook if you're having a party. Get a bag of chips or better, get someone who's coming to bring a bag of chips and someone else is coming to bring some cups and someone else is coming to bring some sodas. That will get people involved and it'll also help people see and understand that this is not complicated, that this is a group effort, that we're a team, and that you don't have to be the expert of expert and guru of gurus to succeed at what you're about to show them. Make sense? Perfect doesn't duplicate, guru and brainiac doesn't duplicate either. And then finally, and everything that you do, ask yourself, take inventory of the time you're spending on your business. Are you currently doing what you would want 200 people on your team to do every single week for the next year? If you are currently focusing on 60% plus on IPAs, I think you know what the answer is to this question, right? You don't want them doing what you've been doing. And if they are duplicating you right now, it could be part of the reason why you are stalled at silver, right? Why you're paused at platinum. If you want to move beyond, if you want to grow quickly, if you want to facilitate duplication in your organization, you got to pare things down and get simple. Get duplicable, right? Because at the end of the day, you've got a million different directions you could take this. There's so many different products and different benefits for different types of people with Young Living. All you've got to do is be yourself and share in a way that helps other people see that, hey, this can be for me too, right? And keep it simple. Alright, so let's talk about how you pull duplication off in this way. First, of course, like I just said, and it bears repeating, keep it simple. You must. If you complicate, you won't duplicate. Pillars one and two, remember what I talked about there? So getting that showing up consistently and providing something of value, right? That's pillar one and pillar two, those IPAs. These are duplicable, very highly duplicable. And they're easy to learn and teach if you don't overcomplicate the process, right? If you're leading by example and you don't overcomplicate it, these are very easy things for people who step up and decide that they want to do something with this and link arms with you and build a business. It's going to be easy for them to see a clear path without you having to hold their hand and babysit every step of the way, right? Now, remember, IPAs are critical. Keep your 60% and teach the same. And don't babysit or parent, right? You aren't here to be somebody's boss or mama. You are here to point to information, share information, and show up where it can facilitate the growth of your team, right? So if you want to get on a three-way call or if you want to assist with a presentation, that's fine. But don't do everything for everyone. Do simple things and tell people, follow the leader. That's duplication because then they can say, follow my lead to the people that come beyond that, right? Now, in terms of implementing this in a hands-on sense, use your Digital Upline Coach. This doesn't only help you track what you've been doing, but you can connect your coaches to your team, right? You can connect to an accountability partner at basic, at premium and above, you have unlimited connections. And that means that you can see a snapshot. For your teams who are in GetOiling as well, growing their businesses, they can share with you how they're spending their time. So if they come to you and they say, oh, I don't know if this is working for me. I feel like I'm spending so much time and, and my business isn't growing. You can go and look and see whether or not they have been focusing on income-producing activities. Or if you see that they've been inviting a lot, right? And they've spent a lot of time inviting, but they're not seeing new growth, then you know how to point them in the direction of training or some kind of assistance to help them improve that specific skill. It can help you to become a better leader. Alright, obviously getting your team into GetOiling is a huge step on the path to duplication. I don't just say this, obviously, as a representative of this company. I say this because one of the most important things that you can remember as a leader in this business, in this industry, is that your number one job is to point, right? Not to pull. Is to point to a resource, point to something that somebody can empower themselves with. And so with GetOiling, everything that they need to know about setting up, running and growing a business, getting those IPAs figured out and accomplished, getting those lead generation assets in place, branding themselves so that they're showing up the right way online so that people are coming to them interested. We teach all of this, it's all right here, so you don't have to do it. Because guru, remember, guru doesn't duplicate. So get your team into GetOiling. They can get started for a dollar and we have a great referral program as well. Also, you can plug them into our trainings, right? So you don't have to do it all yourself. And you know what? If you aren't a part of the GetOiling community yet, you don't have to be a part of the community to do this. You can actually share with your team. If you go to youtube.com/getoiling, you will see that we have a playlist called The Get Growing Weekly Work Session and we have dozens and dozens of hours of training on all kinds of important and relevant topics that aren't just limited to the tech pieces that we help cover with GetOiling. So plug into that training, bring your teams here. We do the teaching for you so you can focus on the things that grow your business. Alright, remember, residual means you work once and get paid an infinite number of times for that one piece of work, right? Gosh, that's such a great thing, isn't it? Alright, so let's talk about how we get it and keep it with retention. This is the fourth and final pillar of our freedom business. Let's talk about retention. There's some mindset pieces you need to keep in mind here. Don't turn your business into a job. You aren't a boss or a babysitter. See, part of retention is setting accurate expectations for people and providing them with resources so that they don't expect you to be their mommy or their boss to show them every single thing and hold their hand through every single step. Because see guys, you have such a huge blessing in this company and the degree of product education and just the general degree, the scope of the types of products and help that's provided by those products to people. You will not retain people by being the know-it-all. You will retain people by being the facilitator, okay? So remember that facilitation is something that can operate at scale, right? And being a boss or a babysitter, that's something that's more of like a one-to-one thing. And that's not getting paid once or doing work once and getting paid over and over for it, right? One of these is better. So don't turn it into a job. Create resources that facilitate and empower people to help themselves, right? So you don't have to show up and answer every question every time with every single person. You create resources or you discover and point to resources that already exist that help people understand how to get more out of what they're doing, how to help themselves. Because that duplicates, again, being the expert does not duplicate. Alright, creating systems that keep you reminded about anniversaries and such, right? So that follow-up plan that I mentioned before, you can create, there's actually a follow-up plan that's already preloaded into the GetOiling system that will help you to get reminded about when people get started. So you can contact them for their care calls or their, you know, their anniversaries with, with Young Living or with Essential Rewards. You can put those in place so that the reminders pop up for you so that you get that email from your coach that says, hey, today you need to make sure you follow up with these people. This is an anniversary. This person saw some information yesterday and needed to talk to their spouse, right? You keep those systems in place so that you, when you sit down to work and spend an hour on your business, you know exactly what you need to do, right? Create those systems. So instead of spinning your wheels and feeling like, okay, well, I have ten, I have ten members and I need to be on top of what those ten members are doing at every given point in time, right? Or whether or not the person has placed their order this month. You don't only have so much bandwidth, right, for so many members. And so you can't have a thousand members if you are approaching it like you were with ten, right? So create systems so you can grow, whether you've got one member right now or ten thousand. Systems will help you maintain, retain and duplicate. Now, remember that content that we talked about in pillar one, right? So creating those blogs, those videos, the things that are relevant, right? So people who opt in to receive information from you and even more importantly, people who, who sign up, right? Who get their premium starter kit, who get onto Essential Rewards. These are people who want to be helped by you, so don't stop helping them, right? You don't have to hold their hand to help them, but you should stay in regular contact by putting out valuable information, blog posts. You can do newsletters, you could do videos, lots of stuff. That content is not just for lead generation, it does wonders for retention because it keeps you top of mind, it keeps this way of life. This is, after all, if you're focusing on Young Living as a lifestyle, you will retain more of your members, right? So if you're focusing on lifestyle that implements the use of product, you are going to retain with your regular content because people are going to automatically build a deeper relationship with the products that you have introduced them to and see more ways that they could expand that relationship as well, right? Content is important in this, in this regard. Provide incentives for engagement as well. This is from a community building perspective. And I'll talk about this on our next slide. And then, of course, focus on building culture and community. Again, instead of being the guru, instead of being the expert, be a connector of people to people, of people to information and resources. So let's talk about how we pull this off, piece by piece. First, set those accurate expectations from the outset. Let people know, so glad that you've decided to become a member. Essential Rewards is the best way you're going to get everything that you need to get out of this process. You're going to get the best savings, you're going to, to get the best products and you're going to reap the best benefit. So you should expect, get onto Essential Rewards, here's how you do it, set that at the outset. I will be here to help you. I am going to be available on these dates and times on a regular basis. And then, of course, you could always feel free to send an email and be on the lookout. I will be sending out a newsletter once a month and there's a blog post once a week where you will learn more about how you can transform your lifestyle. So keep in touch and be in our Facebook community. We're so excited to have you, right? That is an example of how you set expectations with a new member so that they know where to plug in. Not to say, okay, show me the next step, okay, show me the next step. Okay, I'm not doing anything because I don't know what to do, right? Set those expectations, have those things in place and you will retain a lot more and be able to show a lot more and get a lot more people on because you're doing this in a sustainable way, right? Alright, so have a team or member resource group or page with pertinent info and frequently asked questions, right? So this is, how do I place an order? This is, how do I log in into my virtual office? This is, you know, where can I go to get educational information? This is, you know, all that kind of stuff. Have a singular resource place and share that at the outset so that people go to a resource before they go to you, right? Or when they go to you, say, hey, I've got that information and everything else that you need right here on this page. Here you go, point, right? Alright, now you can create not just a team resource page. You can do this, obviously, with a, with a password-protected blog post on GetOiling. You can do this with a page that's unlisted on GetOiling or you even have the ability to create your own private member area, right? Like, like what you would do with a Facebook group, except without all the headache that is Facebook and on your own website, right? You can have your own member area with GetOiling. Yes, starting at a dollar. You can go and get that started and so you can put all of your members into a group where they can receive this information from you, they can ask questions privately, they can connect to one another and share ideas and recipes and interests, however you like to do it. Have a group, have a, a resource where people can help themselves and stay in touch, right? That's important. So create and apply those follow-up plans I've now talked about several times to your members, right? To your new members, your Essential Reward members in your contact manager, right? So you're making sure that where you do want to do a care call, a check-in or what have you, you're spacing that out, you're not chasing your members down, trying to get them to, to, you know, constantly order more stuff so they feel chased, right? You're just, you're checking in at regular intervals and you've got it planned and you're not stressing out over who's quitting, right? You're focusing on how many more people you can invite to change their lives while also providing support to those who are connected to you in the meantime, to those who are already your members in the meantime. Now, share that content that you've created, what we talked about on that last slide. Share it with your existing members. Send it out in your newsletters. We have saved replies inside of GetOiling that people use. We actually have newsletter templates there where you can, we have folks who do this once a week or once a month. You could do this to coincide with the PV promos, however you like to do it. You could also, of course, create those blog posts and then email that out to your member list, right? So the blog posts and those lead magnets for lead generation, those aren't just for putting out on social media, right? Or, or, you know, on a blog post, put those out there to your members as well. Because anything that they found of enough value to decide to say, yes, I want to hear what you have to say and yes, I want to be a part of this Young Living lifestyle, they're going to want to see the other stuff that you're providing too, the other valuable information that you want to share. Now, in terms of not having a job, but having a business that works for you the way you want it to and setting expectations, you set a time to be present and reward those who show up. This is what it means to incentivize showing up and participating and engaging, right? So this means that you let people know that every other Tuesday or the, you know, second and fourth Tuesday of the month or however you want to do it, you're going to be on a Facebook Live or you're going to have a live local event where people get a particular kind of benefit that they can't get anywhere else. This is also their time to pick your brain if you are some kind of an expert in using Young Living products or essential oils in a particular way. You are not available carte blanche to somebody just because they spent a hundred and sixty dollars and bought a kit, right? You're a professional. Start thinking like your royal crown diamond self. You're available for set periods of time for those who show up and choose to engage. Let that be something that is a reward because it is. It's a gift of your time and attention and expertise. And then, like I just mentioned, operate in those royal crown diamond shoes. Set the example for your team and build the business you want. Don't let your business building be a product of circumstance. Let it be a product of intent. And set this up and work the way you want so that you aren't in a time for money trade and you can truly benefit from residual income. Alright, now to recap, our four freedom pillars are four pillars of a freedom business upon which you can build your residual income dream. First, branding and leads, showing up relevantly to those who you want to reach and help and of course, providing a means by which those people can find you, get what you have to offer and benefit from what you have to share. And then focusing on the right kind of work, right? Showing, sharing, inviting, closing and duplicating that process and repeating it. Making sure that you're focusing on those IPAs sixty plus percent of the time and then splitting the remainder between creating assets that provide you with scale and maintain your business. Alright, and then duplication, making sure that you keep things super simple so that they are easy for someone to follow the leader, do what you did and so that people can see from the outset that they can do what you did. And then, of course, retention, making sure that you are providing information. Not necessarily a whole lot of one-on-one-on-one, right? But providing valuable information and resources with regularly scheduled, you don't drop the ball follow-ups that you've set for yourself so that people get the most out of working with you without it having to take up all of your time. Alright, pretty simple, right? When you break it down like that, it is actually quite simple. Now, how much time do you spend working on things that aren't in those four pillar categories? Probably quite a lot, right? See, a lot of us get into this business and it's a lot of guesswork. Frankly, there's a lot of blind leading the blind, right? There's a whole lot of people who figured out how to do one thing and, and then everybody tries to repeat it and it's the telephone game. I'm here to tell you guys that what we've shared with you today, these are the proven steps to getting what you want out of this business. Yes, there are supplementary things that are important, but these are the core. It works not just in Young Living, but in any network marketing business. And it's so, so important that you work on integrating these into the foundation of your business so that you can reap the rewards that are there for you in a freedom lifestyle. So it's time to simplify your approach. You don't have to be spread out all over the place. In fact, you can get everything that you need in one place. You can get rid of the guesswork around growing your business with all of the training, resources and guides that you need and start building your freedom business today. We have everything that you need to brand yourself, get leads, stay on track with your IPAs, duplicate, retain and scale your Young Living business for just a dollar for your first month. And you can get started today at getoiling.com. I want to thank you all for coming today and watching this presentation. We look forward to seeing you next week on a live version of the weekly work session. If you have any questions, feel free to send them to us, put them in the comments below. If you have topics that you would like to see covered, training topics that you would love to learn more about, we are in this to help you grow. So feel free to reach out to us directly or, or, you know, put a message below for us to read, write a comment below. If you love what you saw here today, hit subscribe and hit that little bell so you'll get a notification when our next video goes live. And then, of course, do go over and see our library of trainings. We can't wait to help you grow your business and we look forward to serving you inside of the GetOiling community. Go ahead and head over to getoiling.com today to get started. We'll see you on the next training.